We are at the City Hall Council Chambers, 10 West State Street. The date is September 30, 2019, time is 5:30 PM. Here for a special meeting of the City Council. Notice to the public, the mayor and City Council welcome comment from the public during discussion of the agenda items, but you are required to step to the microphones, state your name and address for the record, and limit your time used to present your remarks to three minutes or less in order that others may be given an opportunity to speak. The speaker shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and council, and not to any councilors specifically, and it's at the discretion of the mayor and the council to respond to specific questions and comments, or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, could you who are able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cahill.
Here.
Gowdy.
Here.
Hoop.
Here.
Isom's absent.
Lamer.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Wierin.
Here.
Very good, I declare a quorum, let's go to item number E, receipt and number one, Madam Clerk.
No motion is required, the council is in receipt of the civil service new hire list for transit operator and police officer.
Move to accept.
No motion is required.
We, apparently without action, will have received that list. Thanks for scrolling down. Onto discussion items, or do we have anybody that wants to address the hiring list?
No, just with civil service lists, you only receive them, the civil service commission has made the recommendation and done the process, so there's nothing further, however, we felt this was important to get on, given that we do have a police officer vacancy and a transit operator vacancy, that it was not worth waiting two more weeks to get to the October 14th meeting, as we'd like to fill those positions very quickly if possible.
And so if there are no objections, let's go on to the next item, which is discussion of the new bond borrowing.
Good evening, Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So I provided you a handout before the meeting, and I will go over that. So as discussed last time, legally, we can only borrow so much money, and that's based on our assessed values. So our assessed values for property is $1.6 billion, and if you take that times 5%, that's $82 million. That's per state statute, how much we can borrow legally. The council has also imposed a 60% limit of that number, which puts us at $49 million. Currently, our outstanding general obligation debt is $37 million, and then we have developer agreements that were committed to, so that totals $41 million. So the difference between the $49 million and the $41 million is about $8.5 million. So that's how much legally we could borrow, based on our council-imposed limit. At the last council meeting, councillor Lamer asked me how much debt would be falling off this current year, and that is, for our June 1st payments, we'll pay about $4 million. So then that increases our capacity to $12.5 million next summer. So does everybody understand this section before I move on? Okay?
Okay.
So the next thing I want to talk about is bank qualified, which, if you recall, last week I said that that's the amount of money you could borrow that's tax exempt, and government agencies have a limit of $10 million a year. We've already borrowed $3.5 million this year through the state revolving fund, and that was for the Manhole and Point Repair Project, and that was designated as bank qualified at that point in time. We could have had it not bank qualified, but not knowing that we were going to borrow $10 million, or wanting to borrow $10 million this year, we made it bank qualified. So the maximum that we can bond for, for the remainder of this calendar year, is $6.5 Spear Financial, who's our financial advisor, they contacted us and said, hey, with interest rates dropping, we think you should refund the GEO bond 2011, that's currently paid with sewer revenues. You could save an approximately $105,000 in interest savings, and after issuance, about $77,000. So we would like to attach this refunding to this entire bond. Because it's already been bank qualified back in 2011, it will not count towards our $10 million limit this year. So that leaves $9.7...$9,730,000 that we would request bonding this year, if you would like to come up with $6.5 million in projects. Again, that's up to you. So by issuing one bond, we will save on issuance costs, that would be the Moody's rating fee, bond council costs, and Spear Financial. So, go on, does anybody have any questions on this page?
Yes. Why did you add the $3,230 back in?
That's how much the refinancing of bond 2011 is, so we'd like to roll it into one bond, to save on interest.
But, you said for the calendar year, we only had $6.5 million available.
Right, so it's of new money, and the 2011 is not new money, we're just refinancing it.
So this $9,700,000 isn't really what we, we should only look at the $6.5 million, right?
As far as bank qualified, yes, the $6.5.
So that's all the qualified money we can do?
Through December, because we've already borrowed $3.5 earlier.
And what we're getting to is the project list where we've kind of made some recommendations for you to consider, but Diana has some additional financial information to go through first.
So on your next page, Spear Financial developed this sheet, based on our $6.5 million of new borrowing, and our $3,230,000 for refunded borrowing. So to go over this, as you can see, the principal is that $9,730,000, and these would be our principal payments until the year 2032, and these are the projected estimated rates. Of course, we don't know what those are for sure until we actually put it out for bid. And so based on these rates, we have our accumulated interest, and then our principal and interest payments, which is that column plus that column, equals that. And then this column is just what we would pay annually, so it includes both the December and June payments for the year, so it's for that fiscal year. Based on what our current levies are outstanding for GEO debt that we levy for, that's, the numbers in blue, and so our new debt, plus our outstanding debt, is this total. When the citizens voted on the local option sales tax, they said to put 78% towards property tax relief. Excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself, let's go back to this column. Local option sales tax revenue, that would be the local option sales tax that we've designated towards debt relief. You can see that's pretty steady. These outer years, we don't need as much, so we, she just put what we needed to cover the debt. This annual sewer revenue, this is the refunding of that 2011 bond, again, it all comes out as sewer revenue fees, none of it is paid with property tax. So if you take your total, and subtract off your local option sales tax revenue, subtract off your refunding of your bond, you come up with your estimated debt service. So that's the amount that we would levy for, without any additional funds. So last year, the council decided to put in another half a million dollars out of the local option sales tax, through the council-designated portion, and also the cash balance on hand for property tax relief, which this year dropped the rate, down to $1 of the levy. So without putting any kind of extra money in there, the levy would be $1.56 per thousand. So an average house of $100,000 assessed value, which would be $57,000 taxable, that cost would be $88 extra. So, as an example, if you put in the $500,000 this year, it would drop it to $1.3. So we won't get into that right now, because when we bring our full budget to you, and make a recommendation to you of how we spend your local option sales tax, and what you want the rate to be, that's when we would make the determination of how to fund the debt. Are there any questions on this?
Diane, can I ask a question? Did I catch you?
Yes. Do you want me to pull up the spreadsheet, the project spreadsheet?
Yes.
I already had it open, so, yeah.
Okay, and my question was just, does the interest rate, that 2.519 to 6.8%, in looking at the bonded years, is that a fixed rate for the duration of the bond?
No.
And that varies?
That's just...
Excuse me, can you remind me again what the variables are that affect that rate?
How quickly you pay your principal down? You know, Spear Financial does different scenarios, do you want to keep it level, do you want to backload it? In this situation, we're backloading it, which means our principal payments are very low in the first several years, and move to the back end.
Sure. One of the things that I'll say is that usually when you're going to sell bonds, that's where whoever's going to buy them will do a proposed interest rate schedule. This is just there as an estimated thing, but generally, you won't see basically the same interest rate charged over each year, but they'll then average those to figure out who has the best interest rate over time.
Okay, thank you.
And so that's what that 2.519 is really representing, is just the estimate over the life of the bonds. Of the bond, as it's proposed here, which, this is just an example, numbers, of course, would change when we get into things.
And the other big variable is, of course, our valuations, which we don't know for sure until January rolls around, so that plays into it as well. Our preliminary numbers are that the valuations will not go down from this year. So, again, assumptions, we don't know what the utility costs are, so that'll play into it.
Do you want me to open, okay. Okay, I think if there's no more questions for Diana on sort of the number side of things, and where we stand, I wanted to bring up the project spreadsheet that we had brought for you last time, with a few changes that I'll go over very quickly here. As we dug into the estimate on the East Merle Hibbs project, we dropped that from $5 million to $4 million, by pulling out water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, storm sewer infrastructure, as well as sidewalks, as there are different funding sources that we can use for those items. So that's how we were able to remove basically a million dollars from there. One thing that we didn't have on the last go-around was that there are two fire trucks that are proposed to be purchased in fiscal year 2021, or basically after July 1st of 2020. And so we hadn't included those in that conversation, but they really needed to be out there. It's a large purchase, and so that needed to be out there in this conversation, because we will only have $425,000 of cash on hand to pay for this in the next fiscal year. So what you see here is what is not covered by cash on hand. So Justin, and Jeff, and Diana and I were able to meet real quick this morning and just talk, kind of a question that Councilmember Wierin had asked last week, of what's the status on these, and when would we really kind of need the money? Councilmember Lamer has also mentioned that specifically, of why borrow when you don't really necessarily need things right away? So we were able to break things down, and I'll kind of go through it. The tennis court project, which Dr. Schutte had presented last time, was the only one that we actually split into two payments, or two different things, with $300,000 proposed for borrowing now, $400,000 for basically a time period after June 1st or July 1st. The Quiet Zone project, that's one where everything would be ready to go now, engineering and design would need to start, and so that's, ideally, if this one was moving forward, it would be put out for, designed over the winter, put out for bid in the spring. The same is true of Timber Creek Bridge, we're still working on approvals, we don't have all of our, I think we're still waiting on DNR approval, but in-house design, working on that, where we would say, we are hopeful that we will be ready to put that out to bid in the springtime, and we'd want to make sure that we were ready to move on that project as quickly as possible, as it's impacting a very popular park in the park system. And it's been out for more than a year now. West End Park would basically be the same thing, that is geared up and ready to go, just needs to be designed in order to be put out to bid over the wintertime, March timeframe, in order for spring/summer construction. East Merle Hibbs was one that we talked about a little bit this morning, and put the full dollar amount there, for a specific reason, that if you don't fully fund a contract, or if you don't fully fund a project, do you really put something of this size out to bid? And so what we have here, you know, before you, is asking you to basically fully fund the $4 million on that project now, so that it's not a, we don't have the full amount of money there when we would actually get it out to bid, which likely would be sometime in the spring, with design continuing over the wintertime. The design for that is paid for, so that money isn't needed towards design, it would purely be construction, but we see that as being a project that would be a 2020 project. The trail resurfacing was one, you know, we put it with July 1st, there's potential there that we can, you know, move some money around, some other dollars in the CIP, to make that money go further, or to supplement. So we moved that one back to July 1st for further conversation. The sidewalk gaps, I kept that in the now, that we can move forward with it, but I would really like to reiterate that, you know, the 12th Avenue sidewalk project, we're going to discuss the change in scope on that, and I would say, change in scope means we're working with a completely different budget, there's property acquisition that has to start here, that that would be one that we could probably get going here, at least on the property acquisition and design side, here, this, you know, as soon as possible. But I really would like to stress that this is one that could easily come off by just reallocating $375,000 out of existing general obligation bond funds that we borrowed last year. The Ensign Park Shelter and Restrooms, this is one of those things where we weren't able to do the complete project, and the shelter is in really bad shape, and it's one where we do feel like there is a revenue opportunity on the back end by making it something that has an HVAC system, that makes it a year-round facility, and able to be, you know, rented throughout the year. So there's something that we see there that's beneficial. It, at a minimum, and if this isn't funded, we'll have to figure out how to do it, it needs a new roof. It is leaking, and we want to, we'd love to be able to do more than a new roof, but we recognize that if that's the minimum, we've got to do that. The MSA parking lot repaving, we also put out after July 1st, that this would be something that, really, there's not a ton of design to be done on it, but it would probably be something that could tag along with a mill and overlay project, and likely wouldn't be done until after July 1st anyways. Same Stormwater Project at 4th Street and Meadow Lane, that I think Justin said last time, we were at 60% design, and that there's still more design work to do. We're getting that out to bid, we probably wouldn't foresee that there'd be any major expenses prior to July 1st. And then, finally, the fire trucks, with those actually being a fiscal year 2021 expense, as, you know, proposed in the CIP, and as we would look to budget for this next year, the cash on hand wouldn't be available until after July 1st, so that's where we put it there. So you will notice that when you come down to what we're recommending borrowing now, it is exactly $6.5 million. And so, we're happy to answer, Jeff, Justin, and I are happy to answer any questions you might have, but that's kind of the quick run-through, as we really sat down and prioritized what makes sense based on where projects are, and in terms of being ready to move forward, that's what kind of made most sense at this point.
Comments or questions up here?
Well, I appreciate the staff going through that, because those are some decisions that, again, I was not prepared necessarily to make, in knowing some of the priorities, department-wise, the knowledge that you have, and your staff has, to put that together, knowing where those structures are, and the completion of the engineering on many of those projects. So I do appreciate the work you guys put together on that, thank you.
Thank you, Consular Cahill, any other Consular comments?
Is not the MSA parking lot, do they not collect fees from their players? And they've disassociated from us, they're now self-supporting type thing?
Yeah, it used to be that the city would do all their registrations and things, and so they do their own accounting and their own stuff at this point. I think with this project, we would be looking at, you know, if it's something to move forward with sooner rather than later, we would be looking at, okay, is there a financial contribution from MSA towards this project? You know, knowing that this is just one half of it, it's just the West End, it's not the East End. And so, yeah, that's, this would be the only one where I would say that we'd probably be looking at, there could be some other funds, not $250,000 worth of funds from them, though.
And the MFL is on the West End also, they would not be involved with helping some way.
We can always ask, but I'm not aware of MFL's financial status at this point, and kind of where they're at.
Other Consular comments?
Mr. Mayor, is the bridge that's out on the bike path, can the old bridge be reused? Are we gonna, no, it won't, okay. So, can it be reused somewhere else, though?
I think that's what we're looking at, is it possibly something that can be used along the Iowa River Trail where a bridge needs to be replaced?
Oh. I sure hope so, if you're talking about the really pretty one. If nothing else, we need to be able to see it, if we're running by or biking by, it's too pretty to just...
You mean the bridge out here?
Oh, wait, which bridge are we talking about?
The one that's out.
The Timber Creek Bridge.
Oh, sorry.
Timber Creek.
Yeah, I think it's a 40-foot-long bridge, 40 or 50-foot-long bridge, and so, 45-foot, and so it has limitations of where it could potentially be used, but it is something that we currently own, have no use for it within our park system, and we see that it could be deployed there.
Okay.
And the bridge I was thinking of is about four miles northwest toward Albion.
In town.
And that one is right out in the middle of the country.
Yeah, that's my point.
Okay.
Ms. Murray?
Okay, further, you're finished?
No.
Go ahead. I'd like to delve a bit more into fire trucks, age, replacement, so on. I think we all need, we all knew that we had the large truck in the CIP and so on. There's some advantage to replacing two trucks at one time now. How far you want to go on this, I don't know. Maybe Chief Fryerson could give us some input and some background, I'd like to have that anyway before us.
Yeah, certainly, he's here, ultimately, that is one, because it's really a next fiscal year project, I view that as being more of a decision you need to make in the budget process, but we have included the full amount for the two trucks here, just to show you what that looks like. Because it is not something, we do not need that cash right now. We, I mean, our portion of that is not available, which you are right, we knew that we were going to have to replace some trucks, and basically for, we set ourselves on a three-year savings plan to put $425,000 aside to match that, or to, you know, contribute towards that. So, yeah, so I mean, if Chief Fryerson wants to say anything about it, but ultimately, that really is something that I think is going to be more of a budget conversation for you all to have, as to what you fund and where. But as we all know, prices on steel are not, you know, going down, and so that's where, when you look ahead, and how long it takes to actually, you know, make a fire truck, there's different markets at play there.
Just an additional comment, the trucks that we do have are, have quite a list of wear and tear on them, and the number of years that they've been in service is something, and I'm understanding that we cannot find parts for them. It can be serious if we're down a truck and so on. I would like to see and recommend in the future that we do a quicker turnover of these things, so we have some residual to work with. A truck that's 28 years old, or 26 years old, truly isn't worth much. It looks super, it runs well right now, the trade-in on them is virtually nothing, sorry. And if we're looking at Chinese steel to build new trucks, then who knows?
Other Consular comments?
I'd like to have a little more persuasion, a little more convincing to me on the Quiet Zone stuff, but I'm not convinced yet, so...
I'm convinced on the Quiet Zone, for sure. What would you like to know? So, like, I know a friend of my folks did some research on the noise pollution around railroads 20 years ago, and thought it was the right thing to do here, because Ames did it then. And we don't have to do everything like Ames at all, but it really would be a great improvement on quality of life for, you've seen the map where the sound waves go, and where the most sound is across town, and it's just, pretty much saturates the center, and, you know, along where the railroad is, and I've thought, for, I don't know, however long I've been on the council, I've had people talking with me about this, and how important it would be. Excuse me. So, the last time around, we didn't have as much interest and cooperation from some business owners along that zone, and the UPE, I would say, and this time, it feels really a lot different, like we could actually get it done, and I say, let's take the opportunity while we have it, it may not be here forever.
The previous attempt was, the UPE was going to pay some of it, and there was only one business that interfered with that whole project.
That's one of three votes, I admit, was wrong. I made the wrong choice on that, and I did it from the wrong reason, and I've regretted that ever since. That business owner, you know, he was in tough straits physically, and it looked like it was going to hurt a business, and so for the wrong reason, I voted against doing the Quiet Zone. I wish I had that vote back. And I was awakened again this morning about 5 o'clock by the train noise. We live the furthest north you can go on 5th Street, so we're ways away from it, it's still a bother. And I know that the people that are visitors in town, we've got a daughter's wedding coming up in a couple of weeks, there will be a lot of visitors staying in the Tremont and in the motels around town, and we'll hear complaints about the train noise. Ames has some envy of us about the viaducts we were able to build back in the Mayor Stegman days, but I've got some real Ames envy about the Quiet Zone, because you can really only hear that within a block or two or three. that within a block or two or three of the railroad tracks. And the rest of the town gets to sleep well, including those in the motels. I don't get a vote though.
But I think the thing to remember is that there's still negotiations to be had with Union Pacific if Second Street were to close. And so that's where tonight, we're not talking about the scope of what that looks like. This is just the price tag that is there. And so if this is one to move forward, then that's really when the engineering would start and those conversations would start. And there would be a future council meeting where that discussion would happen about, do you keep Second Street open or not? So basically, this is seen as a local improvement project. It's not something that Union Pacific says, yes, we want you to do this or anything. They are basically, if we meet X, Y, and Z requirements, then under federal law, they are required to comply with our project. And so I would say that Union Pacific has not really been involved in these discussions other than knowing that this was something that we were going to be talking about, only because they don't have any role in these initial discussions. But there certainly is if you're proposing any sort of closure. So, and I think that at a minimum, it's 15,7500 from the DOT and 7,500 from Union Pacific that they have to do at a minimum if you're going to close a crossing. So doesn't change the financials that much, but it's all about how important is that crossing to Union Pacific and is it worth it more to them to pay more for it to be closed? But we don't know that right now. We wouldn't discover that unless we were actually going to move forward with the project.
In years past, with other mayors, in the past, they've had trouble getting a dialogue going with the railroad. But I think at this time, we've actually got pretty good staff dialogue going with them. So if the city thinks this is a good improvement to make, I think we can. And then just as a side note, for the number of times I did have a vote on this council and I voted for a million-dollar expenditure each meeting, I look at this million dollars as being a little itty-bitty piece of something that can make the city be a lot more attractive to people that want to live here and quit commuting. But I'm talking too much and I don't have a vote. Others?
I got one more if nobody else.
Go for it.
The Merle Hibbs Road, in the past, recent past, if a developer was going to develop something, they would pay for the road and the utilities and recover their money from the cost of the lot. Now all of a sudden, there's another development to go. And we're saying that we're going to build a street. So if you go back to those other developers, they might be a little ticked off that we're doing this now and we made them pay for it.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that. The one thing that I really regret not mentioning last weekend, which was one of the reasons when, where this conversation initially started, Kating Properties is building 30 duplexes right there by Iowa River Hospice in the Plaza Heights Circle. And then they're building another, I think, 16 units just a little bit farther off of Second Street. There is only one way currently in and out, and that's already a heavily populated area. And so how this project was initially sort of born was in the conversations with Kating Property and in staff internally with, you know, Fire Department and Engineering looking at, there's a traffic congestion issue as well as a public safety issue when you only have one way in and out of such a heavily dense neighborhood with residents. And so that's where this project initially started out of was a transportation sort of safety and transportation flow so that you gave basically an outlet, which would probably be better used than Third Avenue currently that's kind of down in that area. So that's really where it came out of. But what it does is it opens up everything else. Why can't we make Kating Properties pay for anything? Because they already have a street that gets them out and there's nothing in code that forces them to do anything else. So we're basically in a situation, much like with South Seventh Avenue to South Ridge, where just the development itself doesn't have any code regulations that require it to do more. However, for the safety of a neighborhood and basically, you know, addressing transportation issues of a neighborhood, this project becomes something that becomes a little bit more vital in what we need. The other thing that I'll circle back around on, and we've kind of talked about this, that strategic planning and other things, is that if the development mindset of Marshall Town is that everybody has to pay for what they're going to do, it's not something that we're even competing with cities on another level in terms of development. If we're requiring developers to pay for everything and we're not having a share in that, whether it's residential or commercial, then we're basically taking ourselves out of the game of having any conversation about development in the future. These are expensive projects. East Merle Hibbs, I mean, this is really, it's not a huge stretch of road. It's through a very difficult terrain. And I think that's part of it, why I think there's some additional city need to get this project done is because there's a huge hillside that needs to be cut back. And there's going to be remnant parcels, which are probably not developable, that just need to be kept for the laying back of the hillside. But it's something where I think the, certainly people can be upset about how they were treated in the past. But I think what we have to do is look at what is the future and how are we developing Marshall Town in the future? And if we just say no to anybody who, you know, is, or say no to any suggestion that we contribute something towards infrastructure, I think that's where we're going to be in a position of, we're not growing, we're declining.
We've had enough challenges enticing developers to come up. The tornado did help a little bit with some of the credits, but I still regret we didn't get the Condon Properties units out there too. They just simply couldn't afford it without the credits, probably even if we were going to help on the streets. But again, I'm talking too much.
I got one final question. Are we going to vote on this as a package or are we going to vote individually on these items?
My thought was, you know, we have a proposal before you that if there's something on there that you don't like, it would certainly be nice to have some discussion, you know? And I mean, what's before you is just purely a recommendation. You all have the ability to make changes to it, so.
And the answer really depends on what the motion is if I get a second.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to weigh in a little bit. These projects are very worthwhile and needed in moving Marshall Town forward. However, there are dozens of other projects that need addressing. It's difficult to determine priorities. I guess I'm a little bit chagrined and that some projects more recent do have urgency and some could be put off and put in the overall strategic plan. I'm stating the obvious, but I do get upset when some of these projects come in over the top and outside the parameters that we've set for ourselves for a long time, talking about specifically maybe the fire trucks. So I just offer that as a perspective. Many projects out there that are worthwhile and need doing, it's our job to stay within a budget and set priorities. I realize that.
And one thing to be clear is I think we're not saying, don't do anything that's under that July 1st column. We're just saying that it's not something where the funding is needed right now. And so there's a future conversation that would be coming back to you because those are certainly things that are there, you know? And like I said, with the fire trucks being in the fiscal year 2021 budget, that's really what kicks it into a July 1st column is that our match isn't even available until July 1st. And so it truly is a next fiscal year project, which moves it there. But there were, you know, other ones of these that were kind of initially started in the CIP as well, Quiet Zones being one of them that we did have in the CIP. We had the Timber Creek Bridge replacement in there for $50,000 and well underestimated that we could not put back what we had, what had washed out. And the sidewalk gaps as well have been in the CIP too. Along with, I mean, Anson Park is kind of what we really couldn't get done with that project and then making the shelter a little bit more usable.
Other comments or questions up here? Otherwise, I'll open it to the public.
I just have one, Mr. Mayor. On the obvious, in the third ward, which I brought up last council meeting, on the Fourth Street and Meadow Lane. And I don't have a problem moving it to the July 1st because of the simple fact that that's in the summer when it would be done. My question is, is why is it in this borrowing phase when it's going to be paid out or paid for by the Stormwater Fund? Second of all, it seems to me that when we raised rates on the Stormwater end of it for water runoff on commercial properties, it was to pay for some of this. And obviously, that's what this is stating. So we've raised the rates on the citizens to pay for this project. And now we're turning around and borrowing money and those citizens are going to have to pay taxes on the money we just borrowed.
So just a few, a few things. So the citizens would not be paying taxes on the money we borrowed. The Stormwater rates have been set and accumulated or are basically set in a way to pay the principal and interest payments on this money, not to pay for the whole thing in cash. Rates would be significantly higher if we were trying to raise enough money to pay for projects in cash. And so that's why we need to borrow it is because it is not something that we have cash on hand for, but it is something that rates are set in a way to be able to pay annual and principal, annual principal and interest payments over a whatever, five to 10-year timeframe. And so it would be something that would come out of the Stormwater Fund. It would not be on our debt service tax levy.
Okay.
Others up here?
Mr. Mayor, could I, could I kind of walk through a few of these projects and give you my opinion on them and we'll go from there?
You bet.
I think that tennis courts at the high school is a great idea. I'm really concerned, if you look at the projects that we have listed here, there are two, four, six of them that are in our park, park system already. And we haven't even touched one of our new parks that we were going to redo. We haven't done a thing with it yet. I think, I would like to see us take care of what we got. I think the Phase 1 in the West End Park, I think we're going to find by the time they get that water diverted so that they can finish the development, it's going to be a lot more money than what we got here. I think that's going to be a ton of money because every time we get a major rain, that whole area floods. So some way they're going to have to get it de-watered first before they can do the work. And I think that's going to be really expensive. The Timber Creek Bridge, I like that idea. It should have been done a year ago. The Quiet Zone project, I've, I've had a couple of people sit down with a cup of coffee and convince me that we ought to do this. And each one of them, actually when we were done, we came up with the idea that this is, this is about people coming to Marshall Town. It's not about Marshall Town people. Most of us are used to the sound. The public has said that they don't want us to spend the money there, but we bring people to town and when they're setting in the Tremont or somewhere and they get up in the middle of the night and they're woke up and because of the train whistles, they're not going to come back and want to live here. So I've been opposed to it all along, but I guess it's one of those items that I don't care anymore whether we do it or not. If we do it, fine. If we don't do it, it's fine. But the trail resurfacing, I walked that trail every day for a year and a half and it gets used a lot. And maybe that's why it's wore out because I was down there walking on it. I don't know. The sidewalks, we need to just do them. The Anson Park Shelter House restrooms, we need to do that too. Those should have been done a long time ago. If you, if you're a mom with a little kid down there, you need a place for, you know, you know good and well, by the time you get there, you're there 10-minutes and the first thing, I gotta go mommy. So, you know, it's something we have to take care of as a, it's just, it's just something you got to do for the park. I don't care about the West End parking lot. I don't care. That's not a big deal to me. The Stormwater project, that is a big deal. I want to get it done. The sooner we get some of those projects done, the less complaints we're going to have of water in the basement of people's houses. And that's, that's our job. We need to do that as a city. The fire trucks, if we need them, we need them. That's my, that's my go on the list.
Nice thing about the fire trucks is we sure have a nice place to park them when we get them.
Yeah, we do, don't we?
We do. That open house is just sheer fun, truly.
I would like to add to the Quiet Zone project. I appreciate what Councilor Lamer said that, again, some of this is for people coming to town. But I also think one of the main things we have stressed is the, our downtown master plan. And one of the things that I've always stressed is having apartment living or upstairs above our retail level of living in our downtown area because we know having residents in the downtown promotes business in the downtown, supports the stores and the restaurants in the downtown and helps make it vital. So if people are going to want to live there, they're going to have, they would like a place that is not affected by the trains at 5:00 and 5:15 and 5:25 and on through the early mornings. So I do believe that becomes one of our quality of living pieces that because of the tornado, again, we have this opportunity to make something different. And we've got people buying into making things different in our downtown so that we can make it stronger and make it more economically, or make it more economically sound. So I believe that that is a piece that we, that is important for that continuation of our economic growth in our community. And it may be the people coming from out of town or the people who are in town who say, hey, I would like to live in that, that area or in that type of a setting. So I do believe that that's, that is a key one that we, that we do have to work on. Many of these also are involved in our parks. And I think we all agree that that quality of living is part of what makes our community, will make our community strong. So I do think that we have to continue looking at these. I feel that the fire trucks and all are, we're still on target for what we had talked about in our previous budgeting cycles of where those would get paid for. And so I feel that these, with the adjustments that we have made here, that we could take on these projects in the order that you have outlined. And it would be something I'd be willing, I know we haven't had public discussion, so I'll wait, I'll wait for that. But I would be willing to make a motion on this once we get to that point.
Thank you. Anyone else up here?
Just a question, Your Honor. Is there any benefit on the Stormwater project to splitting that over? If we were to shift a couple of other projects to July 1st, would there be any benefit to putting a million dollars into this borrowing?
When you go out, I basically, I think what you're telling us is when, when the plans and specs are done and we're going out for bids, the contractor wants to see the entire month. He doesn't want to split it into two projects. So since it's going, are we doing revenue bonds?
That's, I've talked to Diane about that and we'll need to talk to Bob, Justin, Maggie Spear. Probably not. It's with Stormwater, it's easier to do them as a general obligation bond than a revenue bond. But if that is an option that keeps them out of this conversation and it makes sense to do, then we'll certainly do it. So I think there's some specific requirements that we have to meet to be able to do that. So.
Good, is, would this fall under some of the borrowing we do from the state from DNR?
I don't think Stormwater is state revolving fund eligible. I think that, I, we need to look into that, but, but I don't think it's eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Public comment?
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Raymond Starks. I live at 116 West Main Street. That's above the Optical Center. I am coming to you today. I just moved to this community probably about four months ago. I went to Drake University and Drake University Law School. I clerked at Moore McKibben Goodman Lorenz and now I'm an attorney there, I'm happy to say. I'm coming to speak to you because of the train noise. I, I came to downtown Marshall Town because I wanted to live in a place that was close to the places I went out to eat when I worked here, that was close to work, just a few blocks away. The rent is really, really reasonable. So I thought this is really the place to go. I'm not originally from this community. I kind of knew about the train noise. I didn't, I didn't really ever recognize the extent and I think it's hard to until you really live here. But I, I came to this town because I really liked this. But I, I came to this town because I really liked this community. I really liked what I saw in it, especially I was here during the tornado and I saw how the community came together after the tornado. But one of the reasons I'm, I'm speaking about this is because I think it's important as somebody that's new to the community to try to, to try to make a statement about where we are. I, to get people like me that are younger, people that want to move to the downtown, that want to be closer to the, to their place of business, to be closer to the businesses that they visit a lot, to the restaurants that they visit a lot, one of the things that's, things that's going to keep them from that is the amount of noise, the noise level. It does have an effect on quality of life, I can say, and it's something that when my lease comes up, I will definitely think about moving to a different area of town because I'm someone that works late and I'm someone that sleeps pretty heavy, but I get pretty distracted by the train whistles blowing. I don't know how many times when they blow through, and I'm someone that, that will sleep through three alarms, but the trains still wake me up. So I guess I'm, I'm in front of you today because I'm, I'm urging you to take action on this part of the downtown master plan because, quite frankly, the Quiet Zones are needed to bring more people to the downtown, and the, the people in the downtown are necessary to keeping our businesses alive. So thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Raymond. Welcome to town. Welcome to the practice. I think you'll enjoy both here. Other public comment?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So I don't have a problem with the Quiet Zone other than part of the scope, but let's say we're interested in quality of life, and I got my window open, and I got a quiet train, and I smell JBS wake me up. How are we going to deal with that problem? That's ever-going problem. So if we're interested in quality of life, let's get that up on the top of the agenda. I was looking at some numbers, and I looked back at a couple of road projects, and the little Fourth Avenue project we just did, that cost us about $340 a linear feet, a linear foot, to do the, the microsurface on Sixth Street was $23 a foot. Now, if we were to totally redo Sixth Street for the same distance that we micro-surfaced, that would take about six and a half million dollars. Now, we told people that there was another option when we went after the local option sales tax portion, and there was part of it set aside for roads and sewers. We told, people were told, there's other options for this. There's no roadwork in here, and if we keep going down this road, basically, according to just some quick numbers with Justin, we have 150 miles of two-lane road, and using my $340, it would take us 10 years at $30 million a road to redo roads, and the lifespan of roads is not 30 years. So that's a big hole that's never getting filled, and, and we are spending money on other things rather than infrastructure. And I think infrastructure is the key business of the city, and I think we should rethink the priorities.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Theron Chudy, 507 Craig Circle, School District Superintendent. I just want, in all due respect to Councilman Lammers, what you suggested regarding the tennis court project, which was taking care of what we have is exactly what I'm asking for. Those courts were built in 1974 in a collaborative way between the city and the school district. It's on school district property, but those courts were built and have been maintained for 45 years with funds from both the city and the school district. It's unfortunate that they're at a point of no return as far as putting serious money into them to try to get another 10, 15, 20 years, but from what I can tell, for whatever reasons, over time, the city has made decisions that have either systematically reduced the number of courts within the community for people to use or to repurpose them. The French Court, or French Park Courts went away. One courts, one court replaced those out at Riverside Park. The West End Courts got in, you know, bad condition. Those were, I believe, the original high school courts when the high school was Miller back in the early to mid 1900s. And so when those got repurposed, which was a wonderful, beautiful way to repurpose those in a way that served a lot of community members, that, that essentially took four courts of the 12 that we had available to both the high school and the community out of the system. So I think on the back end of that, what we're proposing is even better than what we had before in that all of those courts would be centrally located so that hopefully we can, over time, work with Park and Rec to rebuild the youth programming that once existed to help be a feeder into what has continued to be a really strong high school program, not strong in the sense of maybe the type of competitiveness that we'd like because we're missing out on the youth end of it. Many of our kids that come out, 35 to 50 strong boys and girls, their first experience in it may be intramurals in either intermediate at Lenahan or possibly Miller, but their first real competitive play for the most part is happening at the high school. So in four years, we're trying to do what a lot of communities do in developing kids, maybe over a 10-year period. So I just wanted to clarify that what we're asking to be done, though it may be a difficult time because you have a lot of worthwhile projects to consider, is in essence, taking care of what we have versus doing something way beyond what we once had. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Cahill, I think we may be ready for your motion.
I would move that we borrow up to 6.5 million to fund the projects as listed on the paper provided to us, with 6.5 million being borrowed at this time and the remainder being borrowed after the July first timeframe.
Thank you. Second?
Did you hear the second?
I did.
I have frog in my throat.
Bethany Weren. Time for more comments or questions up here?
One, one small clarification to make, just to go back to kind of that first page that Diana sent out is, while, while I appreciate, appreciate the motion, we are talking about technically the, what would come forward to you would be that 9.73 billion because of the refunding for the 3.23. Just so as long as everybody's clear that that, that refunding is something that would move forward as part of any borrowing that you would move forward with recommending tonight.
I can either adjust the motion to reflect that, or?
I, I think it's fine. We would just be including it in the same public hearing, so that's just where I want to be everybody, I want everybody to be on the same page with where we're at.
Thank you for that clarification.
Is the second or okay with that explanation as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
So it's a public hearing, and we're going to find out what the tax rate or what it does to the homeowner?
Um, well, you, you have that in a scenario in your packet right now, and so, I mean, that, that information is there. Ultimately, everything is just preliminary until you actually sell your bonds and figure out what interest rates they're coming back at, but I believe the intention was to use that principal repayment schedule that's proposed here. And so that's where, this is all an estimate. We won't really know, I mean, you don't know until you get your valuation figures in late December, January, but the, what you have in your packet tonight representing that 9.73 total is the best that we can show you at this point in time.
Other questions, comments?
Is there any way that we could reassess some of Merle Hibbs Boulevard if there's subdivision development out there? When we did, when we did Merle Hibbs Boulevard by the ponds, Gethman Construction did that subdivision, and he put, he put the road in, but we paid the difference in costs between a normal road and the over-depth and the oversized rather than, but he did it all first, and then we just reimbursed him for it. Is there any way that we could, because I think you're going to make this wider than normal, aren't you? It won't, Merle, hey, yeah, so it'll be wider than a normal street. And I, I'm concerned that you don't have all the utilities in there because they're going to cost a ton of money with that hill there. It's, it's, this, this is just a, I think this is just going to be a drop in the bucket.
Um, I think we've, this is just the first phase. So this is literally just connecting up to Plaza Heights Circle and making that north-south connection down as well. This does include property acquisition in it as well. I think the hard part about assessing any of this to a property is that more than likely the development that could occur out there isn't going to need anything beyond what we would be putting in to, to make that connection up to Plaza Heights. And so that's where, you know, those are, those are things to be vetted out in, you know, a development meeting and a planning process, but based on initial conversations, there's not anything more that's needed from a future development. It's the housing developments that are already underway where, you know, there's, there's really nothing that we can do code-related to require anything there.
So this won't affect the, the new road to Swift Club?
No.
Because we really, we really need to get, it's more important than this road right here is.
The, the proposed funding source for there is using cash on hand, that is local option sales tax capital designated, and then a small portion, I think 128,000 of road use tax. So that one, looking at cash on hand if we get a rise grant to match.
If we don't get the rise grant, could we move this 4,000, 4 million up there and get it started?
Yeah, that's certainly an, an option because ultimately what would come before you in a public hearing would be $4 million for a street improvement, for a street project. And so a public hearing isn't going to designate, just kind of like the same with the sidewalks, you know, that ultimately the authority was for borrowing for sidewalks last year, didn't specifically say 12th Avenue South, so.
Okay, thanks. Others up here? Anyone out there? Roll call.
Lamer? Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Nope, no public discussion.
Okay, I guess because it's a special meeting, we don't have any other public discussion. Thank you for coming, and we are adjourned at 6:34.